Roll call please, Ms. Thompson.
District one, Darryl Jeter.
Here.
District two, Michelle Glover.
Here.
District three, Eddie Ski.
Here.
District four, Michael Ricky.
Here.
District five, Danny Castile.
Here.
District six, Chris Manus.
Here.
At large, Stephanie Addington.
Here.
Supervisors, you all had a chance to read the agenda. Were there any additions, corrections, deletions? We have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the first.
Then make, make, make the motion. Ms. Glover, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And on to the minutes. You've had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting of July the 3rd of 24. Any corrections to that? We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Minutes.
Mr. Jeter has made the motion.
I'll second.
Addington, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we move on to the citizen expression. And before we actually open it up to the citizens, we've got some visitors here that we need to recognize. We've had some great success in the county for the past year in sports. And we've got the Raco softball team here. And we've got Colton Kilgore from Twin Springs. So, Colton, if you'd come up to the podium, please. Leave your glasses on, yeah. Colton Kilgore from Twin Springs, supervisors and our visitors. He is the champion in the 2024 Virginia High School League One-A, state champion 300 meter hurdles. And we want to present this to you as a token of our appreciation to you. And I know how hard it is being an individual in these meets. It's really hard. I appreciate you, appreciate what you've done. Supervisors, anybody need to say anything?
Congratulations.
That's right. Want me to get a picture? Let me just get a helper. Good. Slip that in here. Thank you for coming in. Where are you going, Sco?
I'm down here.
Okay. That's great. Great. You hang in there. Don't, you, uh, it's fine. You're, you're in good times of your life now. Appreciate you. Thank you. And could we start with the softball team coaches coming up here, please? These are my kids in a way that won. I've got two back here that I was associated with a long time ago. And one might have gone to school. They got our community. Girls, it's good to have you here. On behalf of the board supervisor, it's good to have you here. And we wanted to get you in to present you a plaque. It's presented to the Raco softball team. 2024 Virginia High School League One-A state champions. Virginia State Scott County Board Supervisor. Coach, I guess you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, girls, we're on TV two ways here. And I want you to, if you will, come around here and step up here. Give me your name, if you don't mind, maybe your parents. And where you're going to, are you, are there any seniors? Okay. I'm anxious to hear the names because I know I know your dad very well. He played baseball at Raco when I was principal over there, didn't he? Yeah. If you would, step up here and tell them your name and maybe where you're going to school. Are you a senior or senior?
Olivia Edwards. I'm the daughter of Michael and Casey Edwards, and I'm going to Al's Lloyd.
Great.
I'm Kinsey Hood. I'm the daughter of Nick and Leslie Hood, and I'm going into my senior year at Raco High School.
I'm Montana Dillo. I am the daughter of Billy Dillo and Amy Bowen, and I'm going to Southwest Community College.
I'm Maddie Wood, and I'm the daughter of Stacy and Jason Wood, and I'm going to Bullyfield University.
Coach. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm Peyton Kearney. I'm the daughter of Tonya Lee and Jeff Kearney.
I'm Nikid. I'm the head softball coach at Raco.
Michael Edwards, assistant softball coach at Raco.
Who's your daughter?
Olivia. Yes. Yeah. All right. We've got a bunch of kids up today for media day over at Raco. For, we had a little bigger crew here. So, I also have a daughter, Morgan, on the team. She's cheerleader, so she's media.
That's understandable. Thank you. David Carter, assistant coach. Y'all want to circle around here? The Times News has moved up here. We'll let them get a picture. We're very proud of all of you. Appreciate you coming in and thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll open it up for citizens' expression period. Let me read a little verb here for you. Citizen's expression period is a point in the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from in the county, and or what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one's signed up to speak, we have no particular order. We ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close citizens' expression. Mr. Kevin Helms wanted to speak this morning, so we'll let him.
Good morning, members of the board. I'm Kevin Helms with the Treasurer's Office. And give you a little bit of history of the dog tag ordinance that we have. It's been in place for quite a while. And when I was in office before, we had a program in place where the county tags were sold at several of the local veterinary offices. And over the years, I think that just kind of fell by the wayside. When I took office January 1st, that was an issue that I looked at. And I've met with three of the local vets, or, well, I've met with all of vets, but three have decided to sell those tags in their offices again. A one-year tag is $5. A two-year tag is, or, excuse me, a three-year tag is $10. And then they have lifetime tags as well. But what I'm here to request, and I've met with Ms. Addington, is that the revenue for the sale of these dog tags, I would like for that to go to the animal shelter. Because now it's currently by ordinance, it's just going into our general fund. And I feel like the sale from the tags could benefit the shelter and the expenses that they have. And that's why I'm here this morning. If anybody has any questions about the dog tag. I have ordered more tags. They'll be going to the vet offices soon. So, when someone's there to get the rabies shot for their pet, they can go ahead and buy a county tag and wouldn't have to drive up to the county office to get that. It'll be a convenience for the citizens of the county. And I'm just asking for that revenue to go toward the shelter.
Okay. We will talk about this after the hearing.
Can I ask a question? Do you think the ordinance needs to be changed to do that?
We've looked at it, and I think that we're going to have to designate the line item for it to go to.
It doesn't. Outside of the ordinance.
Well, I read it. It doesn't specify anything about the revenue, but I would just like them to go.
So, you can just do it? Oh, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one signed up for public expression. Is that great? Okay. All right. Anyone else for public expression this morning?
Good morning. I'm Heidi Toss from Snowflake Road. I had appointment rescheduled so I could be here, so I'll actually wait. But I'm here on account of the dirt roads again. And we're so thankful for the rain that we got, but guess what? The roads are worse. And I'm just wondering if B-Dot could put in some drain pipes on these dirt roads. That would fix, the band-aid fix, that every time a rain comes, it washes what they do. If they just put in a few drain pipes. Or if they, do they use drain pipes anymore on dirt roads? Stephanie, you know, I've gone to help friends on Snowflake Road. They've done it. It's real, the one I've been complaining about, it's really, real, real bad now. And then another thing that has been, people talk, they know I come to these board meetings, and they bring up Riverside properties. Is there something that they can do to bring money in instead of money going out? Like, a community college, it's been mentioned, a community college for our kids in Scott County. It's still them handling the drive to Wise or East Tennessee State or wherever. And then another, they said, well, just sell it. Can you sell it to get the money back to Scott County? And, and Mr. Kilgore, I still want Mr. Kilgore to get more money allotted for dirt roads. Because to have 250 miles of dirt road in Scott County, that's nothing to be proud of. And I think he's, he's our key to getting more money allotted for dirt roads. And the six-year plan, I wish we could come up with another option other than the six-year plan. But I'm here to keep Snowflake Road on six-year plan. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm no speaker. I'm so nervous. But I am an animal lover. I've groomed dogs for 25 years in this.
Name of your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Catherine Stoward. I live on Big Moss. I'm a transplant to Scott County from Wise County. And I started grooming dogs in 93, retired in 2018. But always been an animal lover since I was little, big enough to drag in a stray for my mom and dad to deal with. I still foster for several rescues in Fredericksburg and Charlottesville till I can get them on the transport ban. But, and I'm ashamed that I've not come sooner and done something sooner. Because when I call about a dog, or a cat, or a horse, I want, I want the Virginia law enforced. And the law now is an animal can't be left out in the heat over 85 degrees or in the cold under 32 degrees. And I've made calls about a Great Pyrenees mix. It was in 96 degrees in the sun. And the people, they're on Big Moss, and have just made a little circle of a makeshift fence. And back in the winter, they moved that dog over to another little circle, but they left its doghouse in its other circle. And it stood in three inches of rain. You can, I've got it on my phone. It rained three inches the day before. The dog stood in the rain and was soaked to the bone. And then it got 29 degrees that night. So, I called Animal Control. I had to go by there. I'm a caregiver for a lady in Snowflake, and I went by and saw that dog out there curled. I thought it was dead. I thought it had froze to dead. But anyway, he went, and they did move the doghouse over. When these people moved here from Texas, I messaged them, and I said, you know, why don't you move your dog back 20 foot where it can get in the shade? It's a working dog. It needs to, yeah, it said it's got a doghouse for shade. Well, I also have a picture on my phone that shows you it's, a doghouse is a, is an oven. It's hotter in the doghouse than it is outside. And I've seen that dog try to get in a little three-inch slice of shade right up against that doghouse. But, I mean, it's just something all the time. And people know I'm an animal lover, so they're telling me about this stuff. Somebody that's at work today, but did ask me to tell April Mead, that lives in McConnell Hall, her neighbor Shannon Sluss, I think, has been put in jail. But he had a mom and dad and six pups that was killing her chickens, and it also killed any. And they had sent video to Bill Dennis and Jake three times. They said you have to have proof that it was, and they had video that they sent to them. Well, the dogs are still up there fending for themselves while, you know, nobody's feeding or watering. And of course, they're going to kill whatever they can kill to eat. So, those dogs need to be picked up and taken to the shelter. You know, they're just on their own. The other caregiver that works with me called about a man moved off and left about 20 chickens with no shelter in a little pen. And they were being killed off one by one. And she called several times, and nothing was done about them. So, she went over and tried to put a tarp over them to give them some kind of shelter. But anyway, I have ordered up the Virginia Animal Law Book, and I'm going to study up on the law. And I want my tax money to go to enforcing the law for these animals.
Garrett Baker from Boosie Creek. Just wanted to give you an update on B-Dot, Mike. And they have moved in on Boosie Creek, and they're doing a good job cleaning out the ditches and the culverts. And they're using a type of equipment that does a whole lot better digging out the ditches than them old road graders used to use, I do. And doing a good job. It picks it right up out of the ditch and puts it in a truck. And just wanted to give you an update. And I wanted to thank Michelle and Eddie, and also our governor for, you know, moving them around and helping us do that much. I'm hoping they'll do all of Boosie Creek if they do. We'll be in high cotton for a while. And another thing, this lady back here brought up Riverside. That is a, that is a great idea. We, we need to do something with that property down there. If not manufacturing or a big box store or something. I don't think we'll sell it, but anyway, we ought to find something to go in there. And it looks like they've had plenty of time to do, do that. And, you know, these call centers, on average, they don't last for about 18 months anyway. So, I hate it when they put that in there. But anyway, that's beside the point. That's water under the bridge. But, you know, just be more transparent. I've heard that you all know a lot more than we do. Well, I'm sure you do, and I hope you do. But be transparent with us. Citizens of Scott County deserve it. And the last thing I've got to cover, I'd like to see you all do something for the farmers of the county. I'd like to see you get land use in this county. It would be fair to, it would really greatly help the county, farmers in the county, and it would equal out, instead of putting all, most of the burden on the farmers to pay the taxes, it would equal the taxes out. And anyway, that's something to think about. And if you need somebody to speak to you, we can always get somebody to, to talk to you about it if you want to discuss that. Somebody knows a lot more about it than I do. But Scott County is just one of 13 counties in the state that don't have land use. And I think Lee County and Scott's the only one, they've got it down here in southwest Virginia. So, anyway, it's something to think about, and it would greatly help the farmers out in the county. Thank you, Mike. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good morning. Sheriff Beams, Scott County Sheriff's Office. I got my stats for, we didn't, I didn't do it the second quarter. So, this is for our six-month from January to end of June stats. With the Scott County Sheriff's Office, bonded activities, central dispatch received a total of 31,184 calls for the first six months of 2024. Of the total calls received, sheriff's officers received 5,363 were dispatched to sheriff's office. We had a total of domestic calls and protective order of 86. Criminal paper served this period was 1,743, 1,227 felonies, 516 misdemeanors with 297 drug charges and 20 DUI-related charges. Officers also had 467 traffic summonses and was dispatched 164 motor vehicle accidents. Civil process this period was 1,902 civil papers served. Also, there were 786 IVRs, incident-based reports, with 188 active, 401 marked inactive, and 197 closed arrests. Sheriff's office provided 1,250 hours of courtroom service, excuse me, security, for three courtrooms, 464 hours of front door security for a courthouse. Also, the officers conducted 44 traffic checkpoints. Also, the sheriff's office had 152 out-of-state extraditions. And they traveled 16,733 miles were traveled for these out-of-state extraditions. Also, the sheriff's office traveled 44,167 miles for the month of July. We didn't have all the stats for the, for the month. They traveled 44,167. Year-to-date, total extraditions is 276. Sheriff's deputies provided 35 in-state transports. Also, they processed 363 concealed gun permits. The sheriff's office processed 106 fingerprint applications, and also the deputies unlocked 100 vehicles. And that's that report for that six months. If you may have any questions, or if I can answer or try to answer, I'll know it's right there for this. We're pretty busy.
Looks like it, yes. Some questions, supervisor.
Just appreciate what you and your staff do.
We appreciate, appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Anyone else for citizens' expression this morning? Not with close citizens' expression. And next on the agenda is a public hearing. Mr. Chairman, at when will you discuss some of the topics that's brought up today in citizens' expression? I suppose we can do it now, or we can do it at the end if you want to present at the end.
Unless the people might need to leave. I just, it's okay. I'll ask Mr. Dennis a question. Ms. Dallard asked about, or made comment about calling in some of the animal complaints. I don't know if she's aware of the ordinance that we passed about dogs. Would you go over there just briefly?
The, about what she was asking about, the two cases that she answered.
Well, that's sort of that, that I'll ask later, but about the ordinance we have now. You can call in complaints, and you'll get responses.
Right. Well, the running at large of dogs is placed in the ordinance now that prohibits your dog from running on someone else's property. But the way we enforce that, we're, we're not looking for dogs running around. So, if a dog's on your, if my dog's on your property and you don't have a problem with it, Animal Control don't have a problem with it. If you have a dog that has a problem, that's causing a problem, that dog will be charged with trespassing now through, through this ordinance. And it's a, animals run at large. It's not like a leash law. In the case of Ms. Mead's dogs, I spoke with animal warden yesterday, Jake, and he had been applying that to those dogs. And most of those dogs have been picked up when he could. So, they've been working with that situation right on. The Great Pyrenees and Big Moss, and is that the one in the big pen? The big fenced-in pen?
It's, it's a little makeshift circle of a mesh fence.
About, about a half an acre, though?
About as big as this. See how that, that there circles?
Yeah.
It's, the circle is about this big.
Okay.
And the dog is in the middle of it.
It must be another dog.
And Jake told me it can get out of that fence if it wants to. Well, it's, that dog shouldn't have to save itself and get out of the fence.
Okay. Well, just trying to see which, which dog we're talking about. We've had quite a few.
It's right across from Daddy Delano's house.
Okay. I'll speak with Jake about that particular situation. But that's the ordinance in a nutshell. Other than a single dog, if, if Animal Control does see a pack of dogs running at large, we may be proactive in, in getting ahold of the owners on that. Because a pack of dog usually will end up causing some sort of problem on other biggest properties.
That's correct.
The end question I had, if somebody calls in a complaint, what's the processing, addressing that, and giving feedback to the person that's calling in the complaint?
Well, that would vary significantly on what the complaint is. You know, if, if it's a complaint that the dog just bit me, it's, it's usually immediate. Try to, try to get there as soon as possible kind of thing and do an investigation. If it's a dog in somebody's yard, you know, that's not an emergency, it'll be put on a docket to be able to go when, when we can, you know, as, as time, time allows. Because you can't be, you know, you're not, we don't, we have one. We have a litter control officer and animal control officer that fill in for each other. So, you've pretty much got like one and a half person for each department. So, it takes time to go investigate and catch a dog and find out who the owner is. But usually the process, if there's a dog problem, the first step is to figure out who it belongs to. If it's a stray, or if it belongs to someone. If it belongs, if they find out it belongs to someone, they'll go talk to that person, say, here's the problem. Y'all need to do this, this, this to fix it. And hopefully, that the owner of the dog will take responsibility for whatever the problem is and fix the situation. If not, Jake usually checks license at that point, rabies, tags, to make sure the dog is legal. And then just go from, go from there. If it's a situation where the dog is in distress, or is in a situation where it's that would conflict with the animal control laws as far as husbandry of the dog, the first thing you do is say, you need to fix this problem to the owner and, and give the owner opportunity to fix it, and then follow up. If they don't fix it, you know, you can go, go from there to a charge of cruelty to seizing the dog and such.
But once our contact's been made, you've been out of visit. And you somewhat follows up with the person that's filing the complaint to tell them what action was taken.
Yeah, we've, we, I've reiterated that to Jake to make sure they follow up to the person that complains. That hasn't been processed before because you're dealing with the owner and the dog. And he may be having a plan, he may have a plan set with that owner to take care of this problem. But the person that made the claim, made the complaint, doesn't see that. So, we've, we've tried to make an effort to contact the complaint, to let them know, hey, this is going on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
They, they may not always be satisfied with what actions we can take if we're bound by the law of what we can, can't do.
I, I've got to speak again. Just, just for one instance, I'll tell you what a win. Just for one instance, I'll tell you what a went through. Jeff Burton, which is, this wasn't his first, he moved out of a trailer near my house. And we didn't know he moved out for five days, and then my husband heard a dog, could see a dog in the window barking. Now, he moved out October thirty-first. I called Jake November the fifth and said, Jeff Burton moved out of this rental property October thirty-first. Nobody's come back. There's dogs walked in that trailer, okay? Jake came and put a notice on the door. And I told him, I said, he's moved out, nobody's going to see. So it took me ten days. And I got the owner up there, Betty Dean, to unlock the trailer. And I called Jake and I said, I've got the owner here to unlock the trailer, we've got the dogs out. He came and got those three dogs. I had pictures of the dogs, nothing but skeletons with skin stretched over them. They had been locked in that trailer for ten days. Their hair was coming off, where they were so malnourished. They had eaten the linoleum off of the floor. I had all these pictures and told Jake I wanted to press charges because this was happened right in my back door, okay? He told me court was going to be nine-thirty January the twentieth. I got up early, got ready, came over here. The lady down there where you go through the detector said, no, that's not on the docket. He told me it was going to be February seventeenth. I got up, I got ready. He said, it's nine-thirty, no, no court. Then I texted him record to see if it was going to be March seventeenth. He said, no. He said, he's not been served. Said, we can't find him. I said, well, he's living over in a trailer at Ricky Burke's Trailer Court in Nicholsville. So anyway, this went on and on, March, April, May, June, and then in July, I called Bill Davis. Well, actually, when I called him, when I texted, and I've got all the texts on my phone to prove what I'm saying is true. I texted Jake April the twentieth, and he said, for you to go into the court over this case, you've got to be subpoenaed. He said, send me your name and address so I can get you subpoenaed. I gave him my name and address, no subpoena. When I contacted Bill Davis, July twenty-fifth, months, months, months. He said, well, that case is already over. So I wasn't told about it. I couldn't show my pictures. I couldn't testify what I knew. So that's my dealings with Animal Control. And before this, I moved here in two thousand twelve. Peanut Marshall put four horses in a field right beside, that joins our property. He never came back. Never came back. No food, no water. Well, the horses were starving to death. My husband had square bales of hay in the barn, and we were ridiculed. My husband said, I cannot let those horses starve to death. So yeah, he put out a bale of hay for them. Well, then it was our fault because we fed them. We should have let them starve. Well, anyway, it took a dead horse and John Puckett to get those horses removed out of my face. And they were put, they were taken on in Russell County, and Russell County confiscated the three left that was living. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think from what we've heard today, this is reoccurring. This is not the first time we've heard this. And I would like to request that some research be done into these issues and have a solution going forward.
Okay, Bill. You want to make that into some kind of motion or just suggested?
Bill, I suggested to. Let's say a presentation discussion about it at our next meet. I know that's a long time now, but we'll get to the bottom. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion that we have Bill present about this issue, to talk through this issue at our next meet.
Well, it's not only this issue, I think previous issues we've seen.
I've heard of three since I've been on this board, horses and dogs, myself in the lifestyle, since I've been here first year. And it's not, you're not the person that's mentioning. I've got taxes and stuff, that people sent me pictures of animals. So it's really getting to be a bigger problem than I was aware of until I got here. And now I see it is a big problem. So I think that's something definitely we need to address as quickly as possible to try to solve this problem because you've got the heat, dry weather now, and I've seen over the years the same thing. I'm sure we've obviously tied dog to a barrel on a chain. So it's like a heaven to me, when you put a dog in a barrel in a middle building. I've seen it over the years. But I do see it has gotten better, but it still ain't been cured.
Can we table this until next month, until, without a motion, until we can get some more research done on it? We'll have it on the agenda next month. How's that? Okay, citizens' expression has been closed. Now we're, number seven on the agenda is public hearings. This public hearing is on the possible adoption of amendments to the Scott County, Virginia zoning ordinance to amend number one, section three hundred dash one hundred point nine, commercial use types, daycare centers. Number two, section three hundred dash one hundred point thirteen, miscellaneous uses to add solar generation facilities utility scale. Number three, section three hundred dash one hundred point one three, miscellaneous uses, towers to delete tower height restriction. And section number four, I'm sorry, number four, section six hundred dash two hundred point one three, miscellaneous use types to add definitions for solar facilities, decommissioning, solar generation facilities, small and solar generation facilities utility scale. And we will open a public hearing on these four sections. Anyone wish to speak? If not, we will close the public expression and ask for comments from this supervisor.
Did that leave you on a speaker?
Do you all want to speak?
Sure, let me get up here and speak.
I think he might have.
Good morning. My name is Sharon Culverston, and I live in Nicholsville, right on Twin Springs Road. Solar panels are being proposed to be put directly in front of my home. One thing I have concern about is in our small community at Nicholsville, it's quiet, it's beautiful, we have peaceful surroundings, and some places we have magnificent views. I've been told by a few people, and I have to agree, because I have a million-dollar view from my front porch, and I do, I have to agree. So it's being proposed that solar panels, and I'm talking hundreds of solar panels, being put from my home, fifty feet off of the roadway, which a road is going to be put in, proposed from my house that would lead into these solar panels. I've been told that there'll be fences around these to keep, like this deer or whatever, these fences will be eight feet tall with barbed wire up at the top, which to me would be like looking into a prison. This to me is going to be not a, I guess, the surroundings will change, the view is definitely going to change to me. I'll be looking into solar panels, I'll be looking into a fence with barbed wire, but we'll be looking like, to me, it's going to be like looking at a prison, I feel like. So my view will be gone, there will no longer be a million-dollar view. This is also going to affect me with one, with some others. Our property value will decrease. So my home might be worth X amount of dollars right now, but when these solar panels go in, that's going to drop significantly. Because who's going to want to buy a place with solar panels right in front of your front door or at your back door or at your side door? In Jase's case, Jase, it's going to be all around him, it's going to be beside him, behind Phil and Randy, it's going to be in front of Phil, like me, and Randy behind him, and my grand Randy behind you. I'm speaking to them. So like I say, Nicholsville is a small community. We thrive on beauty, you know, quietness, peacefulness, just the all-out of views and things like that. And if we have somebody come in and put solar panels, to me, that's going to be ugly. I just feel like it's going to be ugly. It's not going to be pretty to look at. And would you want it at your front door? That's what I'm asking. Would you want it right at your front door, at your back door, beside you, where you're constantly going to see it all the time? And knowing that it has now decreased the value of your home, your property? I mean, you might have a five-hundred-thousand-dollar place that may not be worth three-hundred-thousand now because of it. And I have other concerns, you know, like what is this going to do if a solar panel breaks? Or what kind of things could it release from this? I'm not a very good speaker, but I come from a big city. I was born and raised from a big city until I married and my husband moved me to Scott County, which at first I thought, Lord, where has he brought me to? And he has since passed away. He's been gone a year and a half. And I will tell you, he would not be happy about this right now. He would not. And I can't see leaving my home. It's one that he left me when he passed away. I feel safe, I feel secure, and I have this beauty in front of me, in front of my home right now. And it's peaceful, and it's quiet, and it's gorgeous. I don't want to go back to that city life. And I just ask that everybody here just take consideration, not allow these in front of our back doors, our back doors beside of us. Put it somewhere else where nobody has to look at it, where it doesn't have to be seen. I mean, there's a lot of land around. Don't put it in front of somebody's front door, back door, side door. Don't put it where you're going to have to see. And imagine having visitors come into your town, Nicholsville, saying, welcome to Nicholsville. And then that's going to be the first thing that they see as soon as they drop through. They're going to see hundreds of solar panels. How attractive is that going to be? Visitors probably going to say, well, this is just like a big city somewhere out, and we don't need to be coming back here again. There's nothing beautiful about this place. Look at how ugly all these solar panels are. Look at this big tall fence that looks like a prison. Who wants that? I don't want it. And like I say, this is my home that my husband left me whenever he passed away. I don't want to leave it. But I don't know that I can deal with seeing that every single day in front of me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, my dear. Any of the rest of you want to speak before we close the public hearing again?
Anyone else?
I'm Larry Richardson, Nicholsville. I've got a question more than, I do have a presentation, but unless you're really interested in the background of some of this, I won't ask to do that. If you want it, I'll be happy to go through it, it'll take about twenty minutes. But the question I have, where are we with the ordinance and what's in the ordinance to deal with the solar panel system? I mean, I think if we can get an answer to that, and that's a satisfactory answer, there's no need to go any farther.
Yeah, I think there's been some misunderstanding about what exactly this public hearing is. This public hearing is for the ordinance. Do we have a brand out of the ordinance that we can share?
We can read it.
Yeah, we can read it out to you. There is regulations on there on decommissioning, on how they're supposed to be, what they're...
What's the details of it, though? I haven't seen it.
It's in that book right there on the table, if you want to look.
Okay.
That's not...
Yeah. I mean, can you put a condensed version together of what we're looking at?
She's a reader.
I don't mind to read it if you want to read it. No, it's pages, it's pages.
Single pages, yeah.
Pardon?
It's like five or six pages, though. Would you like to get the revision, just dealing with the solar?
Yeah, just with the solar panel. I could care less if I think of anything else.
This is, these are the amendments for today, and I can give this to you.
Let me just ask a couple of questions.
So you're going to have some ideas.
Oh, sorry.
Are we doing anything? Pardon?
Sorry, just one more thing that I want to make sure that's clear. This is about the amendment of the ordinances to put regulations around solar facilities. This is not for a particular solar...
We hadn't finalized anything, is that what you're saying?
That's what today is.
There's been no application for a solar farm in Scott County.
I understand, but you're going to have an ordinance before they make an application?
Yes. That is the goal of this.
I want to know what's in the ordinance. So if they come in, what's going to keep them from putting that solar panel farm within, right up against the boundaries of Nicholsville, an old town that's been there since eighteen thirty? That's a serious, serious problem if we don't put something in the ordinance that says you've got to be at least two miles out of a town that's incorporated and a setback of so many feet if it's a primary highway, and so many miles around if it's a home resident. If you look, one of the things that I researched and found out is, and I don't know why they put this in there, I have no idea, but the World Health Organization says there should be no solar panel farms within one and a half miles of a primary resident. And they certainly should be solar panel farms within two or three miles of an incorporated town in the county.
I agree.
If you go to other locations, you will find all those are away, I've gone up toward Richmond up through there, they've got them up there, but they don't, they're not in our residence, and they're out away from, off the road. All of them are set back off the road. The one that's proposed in Nicholsville is right up against the road, seventy-one, and then Twin Springs Road. We've got to have some meat in there. It's like when I was a little boy, I would test my parents' limits to the hills. So Dad went out and got an apple tree limb and laid it on the fireplace. And then I've become a little more obedient, I guess you would say. But anyway, there's, if you look at Pivot Energy, I'm just going to give you a couple of bullet gear. Pivot Energy was founded in Demacotterana. In two thousand twenty-one, Pivot was bought by a holding company in New Jersey. I can look it up, I won't forget the names. In two thousand twenty-three, guess what? That holding company sold Pivot Energy to a company whereabouts London, England. The probability of these companies being sold and resold is really, really high. If you look at what's going to happen with these, all this, this money's coming from federal funding. No way in the world could you put in a solar panel farm without federal funding. On the front end is where the majority of the revenue is. One, it comes from engineering. Two, it's project planning. And those jobs, the project planning and engineer, they're probably billing those things back to the federal government somewhere around three hundred and fifty dollars an hour. A lot of upfront money. Then it's like a reverse hockey stick. The revenue goes down. Guess what? There's a good probability it'd be sold out to a bottom feeder. And then they may go bankrupt, and we'd be sitting here in the county with a lot of solar panel farms. The farmer won't know what to do with, and the county certainly won't know what to do with. The farmer won't know what to do with, and the county certainly won't know what to do with.
Mr. Chairman, what was the extent of our discussion about solar panels today? Was it going hide them behind them, or was it just fraud?
Well, we were sent last week a summary of all the solar panel discussion. Did you read it?
I did. I'm talking about the general public, the people that are here today. I think they would like to see the details. Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, the details of what's gonna be, what kind of teeth is in that zoning. It can't be a general term because those people that are coming in here to do this are salespeople, and they've got a lot of bright people gonna be working that. And you're gonna have a lot of loggers that's gonna be working to look in holes in that zone. If you don't have teeth in the zoning, they'll work around it, guarantee you.
I'd like to make a recommendation on this, on the solar portion that we table this to our next meeting. Make the information available to the general public and allow them time to review it.
Should we just read it?
You're talking six pages.
That's fine. I got a good voice. We'll read it.
Yeah, I mean, we've been down to the planning board, and we've been through that. We've had meetings in Nicholsville, we've had calls with the salespeople. The salespeople come in and they really paint a great picture. They're gonna give you 10% off your electric bill as a discount. What they forgot to do is that the transmission lines that they're gonna have to build that's on your Appalachian Power Bill every week, every month, you're gonna have to pay for those lines to send power up to Northern Virginia to data centers. If you look on your power bill, there's something called Transmission Line Services on there, probably around $40, $50 a month. That will be increased to pay to build those power lines that they're gonna have to build to get that power out of Scott County and move it somewhere else. And it's going somewhere else, it's not gonna be here.
Mr. Manus, just on the solar portion, it's 10 pages. You're saying you wanna get through all 10 pages?
I think the people deserve it.
Oh, sure, but I didn't know if we wanted to, that they were just giving them an opportunity to review it.
Yeah, the ordinance, we would have to send out notices again for the ordinance for another public hearing for that. So, I'd like to, if we could, just wrap everything up today. Part of the changes that we're proposing are for daycare facilities, and that unfortunately is wrapped up in with all of this. And I'm trying to make use of some of the commercial property, like out at the Bray Farm, for our citizens. So, I'd really like to get that passed if we could.
Can that be separated from the solar portion?
As it stands, it was recommended by the Planning Commission as a complete package. That's with the cell phone towers. I know you have had a special interest in that as well. So, I'm perfectly willing to read it all today, and we can sit here. My voice is a little bit boring, and I'm sorry if you'll fall asleep.
Let me just say, you can separate out...
We can.
Yes. And one of the things that is administrative, you know, the zoning ordinance is pretty thick, and we try to administratively combine amendments so that it's just printed once on the minute, book pages, and that kind of thing. So, that's one reason we look at it and try to get everything in there that anybody has talked about lately at one time. But that's not a have-to. You can go on with the daycare and the tower, right? Deletion amendments today and have another public hearing if you want to on the solar next month. It was advertised for two weeks in the paper. It has been available for people to know that this was coming and to read the ordinance. But we can make it more available, longer length of time, and have another public hearing next month on that rather than read it today.
And the Planning Commission has had a public hearing and did recommend unanimously an approval to bring it to the board. So, they have already heard it, had a public hearing, and sent it to you guys for consideration.
Will it take a motion to postpone?
Where was that public hearing at the Planning Commission beyond the one that we were at, and we talked about it, and I did the presentation?
The next month. And it was also advertised.
I can't keep up with what's going on, I guess. That's probably my fault.
Do we need a motion to postpone the...
Well, I would like to see if we can, if we can reach some resolution here. So, I'm hearing that location is one of the issues. So, maybe we don't have to read all 10 pages of the regulations. Maybe I can go through and address some of the issues that people have with that. Would that be acceptable?
I can give you two or three things. There's no cellphone or no solar panel farm within two miles of an incorporated limit.
That's not in there.
I know it's not, but that needs to be in there.
Because I didn't see it.
And no, no, no solar farms, it has to be set back at least 1,000 feet from any primary road.
Would, this would all come up during the application for the special use permit, though? This is, this is not allowing, this is not allowing solar energy by rod. This is still requiring a special use permit. And those special use permits have to be approved by the Planning Commission, and then they have to be approved by us as well.
I mean, with all due respect, we have to run the Planning Commission down. They never come back to us and say, "What do you think about this?" God dang it, that's their job. They need to be more forthright in what's happening and what they're planning on putting in a document, not go back and close the door after we leave and put something in there. That's not fair. It's not fair. They need to be more transparent, and they need to put out a document and say, "What do you folks think about this?", and we don't have to come and try to figure out where they're having a meeting, when they're having a meeting, and keep up with it all the time. And maybe you can say that's, we're not being aggressive enough. And that's probably a well-founded argument, but the other argument just is well-founded.
How was this appetized? This was appetized in the paper, correct?
In the website.
And it has links to all the documentation?
No, it says it's available here for review.
So, they would have to make a request to get that?
I'd like to say something. The gentleman there, when he was speaking earlier, he was talking about the putting it on a burden more that's the farmer, after that thing got years old or could sell out, and the farmer and the county would be the one responsible for cleaning it up after it's no longer, I think, had something that needs to be in there.
He could put that in there. Here's the danger of that, Dave. The danger is that these companies are holding companies, and they're just money investors. And they'll, the good guys and the guys that make a lot of money do the planning stuff. And then they sell it off to a bottom feeder. And guess what? They go bankrupt. Or it's hard to see zero. You usually come up to zero.
Then it leaves it back out in the county and the farmer or...
Well, it belongs back to the farmer.
That was a problem.
Yeah, at the end of the day, the county's still gonna have a mess on its hands if they put in several hundred acres. Let me give you some examples.
Did I say something, Larry? Several of these things are actually covered in here. From what I'm hearing, people are not aware of what's in here. Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
And that's why I suggested providing them something that they can look. It may answer all their questions.
I mean, just while we've been sitting here, I've been searching through this document. There's, there's, there's information on visual impacts, that the solar facility shouldn't have any visual impact. There's regulations on setbacks about what kind of trees they can have in there. There's everything, so...
All the way to decommissioning?
All the way to decommissioning, and who's gonna be on the hook. And who has to...
The end of the day is, when they go bankrupt, what are you gonna do?
The landowner and county's gonna have to...
You're right.
Was there a grant, any bonds that would cover that, decommissioning?
There is bonds.
Which I'm thinking, there's a lot of stuff in there, but they just don't know what they're... It'd take a lot of time to cover all that.
I got nothing to do with that.
Right now, these things are changing hands because there's money in it. The next step is that we change hands because there's no money in it.
So...
That's the next step.
Yeah. So, what is the, what is our decision? Do we wanna sit here and go through point by point? Do we wanna make it a little bit more available to people? And just to be clear, this is not for any one facility. This is regulations that cover multiple facilities that may want to locate.
I'll make a suggestion to you. Is get the Planning Commission back together, and then we go through a line item, a special call meeting or something. And Sally can draft up whatever. We go through a line item by line item and see how much we agree and disagree. Because I know she's got, she's got restraints upon what she can actually put in a legal document versus what I would stand up here and argue, so... But I think it would be best if we, I'd be happy to send out with Sally. And we would go through line item and see what we could put in there, if that would work. I'll spend, I'll spend some time to sit down and see if we can come to some agreements.
I think most of the stuff that you are, I think, more than what you would even think about seeing is in, is in these documents. It protects, sorry, excuse me. It protects prime farmland, it protects the people, and they still have to go through a special use permit so we can, we have the latitude to say, "Hey, you don't need to be this close to the town."
You mentioned land in Scott County. There's X number of acres in Scott County. But Scott Drew told me that there's 24,000 private acres of cultivated land. What's a solar panel foreign people looking after? Level cultivated land. And he's really concerned about the food supply and what it could do to the food supply. Let me, let me give you another example. It takes 900 acres to do what one nuclear, small nuclear modular system will do on 30 acres. You know, coal is here for a long time. A lot of people don't wanna, progressives particularly, don't wanna go with that. But coal, there's apple coal out there, it's the cheapest generator that you can get. But the next generation, they're gonna, you're gonna have to go somewhere, is probably the small nuclear reactor. And they've been using that going back to the 1960s on submarines and aircraft carriers. I worked in electrical engineering in a nuclear shipyard for 10 years. Never seen an incident when I was out there. Built four, five submarines a year, an aircraft carrier over three years, and overhauled a bunch of, there was never an incident with those reactors, so... And they'll generate as much power as you can do on 900 acres of solar panels. So, solar panels, at the best, is 20% efficient. That's the best. They don't work when it rains, they don't work when it gets dark, and da-da-da. And you can't afford batteries to charge up during the day to have power at night. But they will outrun data centers in Northern Virginia during the daylight hours.
I'm curious to what source you were quoting when you mentioned setbacks?
I'm sorry?
The source you were quoting when you mentioned setbacks?
That was just me.
So, there's no...
Well, no, the one setback, World Health Organization said, "Shouldn't be within one and a half miles of any residence." I can't think of any, with my background, I can't think of any reason for that. But that's out. If you go out and research it, that's one of the things that they recommended. Not in absolute, but a recommendation.
So, what do we wanna do? So, wasn't to read through this off of that and work through it one by one with you? Sorry if anybody else had anything to do with that. I'll have to call in for the rest of the work, but...
But is it critical what has to be done today? She said we could separate them.
I mean, if we can separate them, let's separate them, and then we'll, you know, right after this, or, you know, you can even go right across the hall right now and make copies of that, probably.
The meeting could be over very shortly if, if we put off the solar farm discussion until next time, just postpone it. And then after the meeting, you can go over and sit down with Mr. Vickers and spend all afternoon reading it to him.
Y'all wanna sit around and do that?
This afternoon.
Okay, I've got a question. Do we need a motion to postpone this till next?
Harold's waiting on make-believe answers.
I could come back later.
If there's a, if there's a time that would work better for y'all today?
Maybe you could schedule a date, because I got some...
Maybe you two could schedule a time between now and the next month before our next meeting.
Would y'all, would y'all be amenable to that? I know people probably have things to do today.
Well, I'm just around, so I'll go, my ride goes.
Or are you all, all in contact with each other? Is there someone I can reach? We'll sit down and talk about it. Go through it point by point.
Could we provide the pages, just the revision of the solar portion? It's 10, it's 10 pages. Let them look at it, and if they wanna meet with you.
My name's Phil Broadwood, I live on a French rank road. And my concern is, is the location. Can you tell me on mic how far away a solar farm will be from my house? I mean, how close can they put it to my house?
Looks like there is some information about setbacks. 150 foot from all public rightaways. That's for any kind of structure. At least 100 foot from adjacent property lines. 300 feet and additional buffering may be included in the conditions for a particular permit. But again, this is not for the specific one in Nicholsville. This is where we start with all projects, and then we'll work with them through that special use permit process to put those around.
In other words, if somebody wanted to ask for permit, they would go by those guidelines?
They would go by these guidelines first, and then they would bring it to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission would review it and then make a recommendation whether or not to send it to the board supervisors. And then the board supervisors would make another decision based on that special use permit. So, there's still quite a bit of...
But there's no teeth in it right now to prevent them from putting it, or applying for an application for right there on that property.
Yes, but there's no reason that we would approve that unless they've met all the, all the requirements and that the community was in agreement that they were approved.
Well, can there not be something put in there that a solar farm has to be located like a mile from a residential property, or?
I don't know, that might be hard to do.
It'd be hard to do, because there'd be no way that you could get that solar farm from a mile from somebody else's property. On this, on this proposed ordinance, "Under Location, Appearance, and Operational Requirements, Visual Impacts, the advocate shall demonstrate through project citing and proposed mitigation, if necessary, that the solar project minimizes impacts on view sheds, including from residential areas and areas of scenic, historical, cultural, archaeological, and recreational significance. Use only panels that employ anti-glare technology, anti-reflective coatings, and other available mitigation techniques. All that need are extensive industry standards to reduce glint and glare." This is two sentences out of, how many pages did you say? And, and it does, there is a setback thing here, but 150 feet from all public rightaways and main buildings on adjoining parcels at a distance of at least 100 feet, that's what you were reading, something like that.
Yeah, so, okay, let's, let's separate the two, because there's some confusion, I think. Let's go ahead and do the cell phone towers and the daycares today.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
We need to do that today.
Is someone else in?
What time do y'all wanna meet here?
You're talking about today?
Yes, we'll postpone these two. We'll postpone number two and four that we're talking about.
Give me some dates you've got, you've got a better one.
Any day you wanna meet.
It's pretty lengthy.
Well, let's just say before the next meeting, okay? So, that just, that gives us about three good...
You want me just to call Sally or Green or somebody and set up a date?
I'm ready to call him.
Yeah, I'm here. I'll give you my card. I'll leave my card, and you can call me and set up a date.
Okay.
If you don't, uh.
Ms. Cadley, could we provide the 10 pages for them today? Is there anyone here that can copy?
I can do that.
I can take the.
I'm a little bit of a missus.
I can put your phone.
I mean, maybe I can.
You can take it back with you, you haven't sat down and agreed first.
That way y'all get to see it, study it, bed working.
Give me your phone.
Maybe everybody gets a better understanding of it.
Yeah. 594.
Then when you come back to talk to.
21.
5. Mr. Manis, sir, that way y'all work it out, figure it out, what needs to be changed, whatever y'all discuss.
I was just.
Y'all good?
Do we need a motion to postpone this?
Is there someone else who wants to speak?
Oh, is there?
Before we do that?
With you.
Okay.
You're still in the family.
I was going to try and communicate that portion.
Thank you, Ms. Vickers.
Good morning, Quentin Wood, I'm with New East Energy. I'm a project engineer. Our company's based out of Holborn, San Jose, Virginia, East Virginia. Thank you very much for working with us through this ordinance and providing some replies to Sally and the planning commission for their consideration. One of the items that I did have still questions on was the definition of site owner. As it reads, it sounds like that's the actual property owner. And in some cases, at least in our particular case, we lease property from the landowner for the development of the sites. There are some companies out there that actually just want to purchase the property. So my concern is listing or having the definition of site owner and then tying that to the decommissioning section of the ordinance would involve the actual landowner. We like to keep them out of, you know, our business, per se, we, us and the county, if there was any type of issue with the decommissioning portion of things. So I'm not really sure, you know, if there's a way to rewrite the definition, or is that something to handle in the S U P process? To make sure the landowner, you know, is not involved within the decommissioning aspect of things, it's just solely kept between the county and the operator of the facility or the owner of the facility as opposed to the property owner. So then, I guess I'm willing to, if you would like any assistance when you go through the ordinance, if anyone had to come down and sit down with, with you and meeting members, you go through it as well to try to get a perspective from the solar side.
And Quentin, I think a lot of people are very specifically interested in a development that's been proposed a while ago by Pivot Energy in Nicholsville. So I'm not, I'm not sure how worried they are about county law, but I would love to have you. If we can find a time that works for everybody.
Yeah, most definitely, thank you. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, so I'll make a motion that we separate the solar issues from the cell phone daycare issues in the ordinance update.
I think you could make the motion to approve if you're of each wants to show, or willing to approve the daycare and the tower amendments to the ordinance. And at the same time, you could postpone the solar.
Okay, sorry, I was making that all in one motion, okay. Yeah, I was going to do that in several, all right. So I make a motion to approve the changes for miscellaneous use towers to delete tower height restriction and miscellaneous, sorry, sorry, commercial use tops daycare center. And then to postpone the discussion of miscellaneous uses, solar generation facility utility scale, and miscellaneous use tops, solar facility, decommissioning, solar generation facility, small and solar generation facility utility scale.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Stevens, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries. So now we'll close public hearing.
If we want to give them, can we take a break?
Yeah, let's take a break.
We'll take a break. We're, so, yeah, the public hearing on the proposed update to the Scott County Comprehensive Plan concerning smart scale projects, free to you on.
On the comprehensive plan, you already emailed that with some changes. The tables have been updated with the newest census data. And the transportation section was also updated to include our smart scale location, which was the natural tunnel parkway, US 23 intersection on the end nearest the Redstone Drive-In. So that smart scale application, I got that submitted last week, so we're hopeful that we'll get that funded in the upcoming round. We should know something probably by the end of this year. Under land use, I'm sorry, goals and objectives in section nine, there was also, I'll get there and I'll read it to you. A section that was updated, you may want to take this out depending on how you're feeling today, I guess. Renewable energy, the goal, promote the development of renewable energy sources such as properly sited utility scale solar energy farms, wind energy facilities, and advanced nuclear reactors. The objective is to guide a development that has a positive impact on the citizens of Scott County and that is consistent with the current Commonwealth of Virginia Energy Plan. Under policy, number one, special use permit would be required for a facility within agriculture and residential, general, commercial, and general industrial zoning districts. And number two, follow good zoning practices when considering location of solar, wind, and/or nuclear. That's a pretty broad goal and policies, so that was included. We did clear up some language things. The plan hasn't had a complete redo in many, many years, and as you know, Virginia Tech is going to be taking on this project as one of their capstone projects for the fall and spring semesters. So we will be doing a complete thorough upgrade of the comprehensive plan, but I just needed changes specifically to the transportation section updated for our smart scale application. The planning commission did adopt this comprehensive plan update at their July 8th meeting with recommendation for approval by the full board.
Okay, we'll open public expression for discussion of the update, Scott County Comprehensive Plan.
Good morning, Representatives of the Board, I'm Representative of District 3, Tim Addington. Just here, took a quick review of the comprehensive plan last night, wasn't really sure exactly what all was going to be discussed today, but a couple of topics that just want to bring your attention to, just a quick review of, regarding page 37, regarding public safety. It fails to mention that Scott County has 911 in G I S. Scott County has had enhanced 911 that includes TCPR and EMD for many years, or EMD for, for several years, that had enhanced 911. And for the county and towns. I think that's something that would probably be beneficial to have in that, because in working with other localities, other parts of the state, you hear where economic development, if they looks at the various different documents and looks at comprehensive. So in, in reading the document right now, it implies that Scott County does not have that service available, and there's only 70% of the nation that does not. So that may be something we want to add to the public safety portion of that.
We'll be sure to get you involved when Virginia Tech does our plan rewrite. I'll give them the contact information as well.
That'd be great, we'll be glad to. And the other is on page 40. It mentions cellular service, five cell service providers serving the county, and it was at 90% coverage. And I think with other work that's being done with Lululewusco and others to try to get better cell service in there, that is, that's not accurate, being 90% coverage in the, in the, in the county.
What was your best estimate?
I, on, on, just, just a, just a estimate, I mean, you're 50% at best.
Is that household or land there?
On this 90%, I'm not sure, that, that's one thing, maybe a clarity of that, of the document, if they are talking about that. You know, cell towers are located, I mean, if it's AT&amp;T, you're looking at corridor based, so you're on 23, basically along 23. When you go according to 72, 71, you're going to lose that. Get more with Verizon on, on some other areas there. But I'm not sure the five cell service providers, there's really a big three now, but that's, that's involved up there with that. And in regards to the previous public hearing, thank you for the suggestion and splitting that out, but I think a lot of them would probably have been interested in this one or the discussion that's on that. As well from, from the Nicholsville community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Hi, my name is Peggy Matthews, I'm from District 5, live up, live up to Sinkin'. I was planning to talk, but I heard in this plan mention the small nuclear reactors, and I just want to bring your attention to that one and make sure you are up on all the research and all the cons to having these small nuclear reactors built in our county. The main thing is, they're going to end up being much more expensive than any other energy producing. It's, the record has shown that they'll say it's going to be pennies on the dollar for your building, and by the time they get built, it's going to be 10 years out before anything would be developed. The costs of developing and designing these things are going to be borne by the ratepayers. This is what the legislation got passed in this last General Assembly. We're going to be stuck with the cost, not just of running the thing, even if they don't get built, the ratepayers are going to be paying for those costs of the design and research. So I just want to put that in your heads. Study this thing very carefully before you agree to allow any small modular nuclear reactor. You got to think about waste. Where are we going to store the waste? Right now, it's onsite waste, and we're in a very, we're a karst formation, we're very unstable land. So I'm just putting it out here, you got to think very hard about it. And I, I can provide more information when the time is right. There's a whole group that's been studying up on this, and a lot of concerned citizens about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak? There was public expression, and we need to approve the update. Any discussion before we pass the motion to approve the update?
Yeah, the comprehensive plan doesn't really have any teeth, it's not allowing anything. It's saying that we want that for our county, that we want it to be an energy generation county. I think if you look at Scott County right now, there are very limited avenues to where we could generate our own power and expand our industrial base. Except, with the exception of TBA in District 6, so that's across the creek there in Duffield. They're stealing the power, and it's cheap, it's 30, 40% cheaper than what the rest of the county pays. But if we're going to be serious about industry and about growing the county, then we need to think about what we're going to do to build our own energy independence in some sort of way. Whether that's solar, whether that's SMRs, and you're right, the, the research is a little bit far out on those, people got excited about them a little bit too quick. But I've worked in nuclear facilities before myself, I don't glow in the dark yet, so. The, the technology is getting there, but you're right in that it's still, they're still trying to figure out how to actually manufacture those.
Yeah, they don't need to be the guinea pigs.
But we have to do something as a county to make sure that energy generation is a part of Scott County. There are, there is one decommissioned coal mine made, there's some gas wells up in, up towards Hiltons. Really, we don't have any natural resources or power generation inside the county, and we need to change that if we want to.
Right.
It is something that we desperately need. Or, you know, we can just push all the industry to Duffield, I'm happy to take it. My people will take all the well-paying jobs and good benefits that the V F P and the mattress factory will offer, but I want that for everybody in Scott County, I really do.
We have a motion to approve this update?
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Manis made the motion, Ms. Addy's in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. And we move on to new business, the, the first item is Scott County EMS agencies, and this concerns, all of our EMS in the county use a state reporting form called Elite EMS, and this is through Image Trend. I met with, with all the EMS coordinators in the last two or three weeks, and they informed me that the state had refused or had quit paying Image Trend. So Image Trend had canceled Elite EMS. But I just found out this morning, Mr. David Gillum's here, speaking for the others, that the state has decided to pick that up again, correct, Mr. Gillum?
That was interpretation of Roger Carter, probably the same. I think you talked freely to nothing else.
Right, so this is, this is not an issue now? Frida, you have anything you want to add?
The state's going to continue paying until December 1st, 2025, so this may be something we have to address in next budget year. The three EMS agencies have been under the Rescue Squad Association, so we would be paying one price for all three, which would be about $10,000. But hopefully Senator Puglian and Delegate Kilgore both are working with the state to try to get this continued. So continuing to work with them, hopefully it'll be something that the Commonwealth will decide to go ahead and continue paying even beyond the 12/125 date, but just so that's on your radar. But it's not an immediate need like we originally thought.
Frida, is that $10,000, is that per year or per month?
That would be per year.
Per year, okay.
And that's for all three agencies.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had.
But they, I believe Mr. Carter just got the letter from Image Trend, he had laid yesterday, saying that they had been in communications with the state and they were going to continue to pay through 12/125.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? We'll move on to Duffield Days fireworks permit. This is scheduled for August 31st, it is on your tablet if you want to take a look at it. Mike Carter is, I guess, supposed chairman of Duffield Days, and we need a motion to allow them to use Crooked Road, Tex Center for their fireworks on August 31st at 9:30.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Manis made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Everybody come out to Duffield Days, it's great.
I think I met you down there last year. You sure did. Bet you glad you come now.
Next on new business is planning District 1 Behavioral Health Performance Contract.